It actually worked?
The solemn business of county government's about to begin.
Another year, right?
What's big news?
And said the solemn business of county government's ready to begin. And Monty's gonna run the show, he's so excited.
All right. Call our means order and let's start with the pledge of allegiance. I am on. I pledge allegiance to the fighting of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Beth, could we please?
Sure. Commissioner Benoit. Here. Commissioner Heinon.
Here.
Commissioner Gepinski.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Pop.
Present.
You need to hit me.
All right, thank you very much. Now we need to select a county board chair for 2025. Are there nominations for chair of the county board for 2025?
I nominate Commissioner Pop.
I'll second it.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. All those in favor of Commissioner Pop as our board chair for 2025, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Commissioner Pop, you are now chair, sir.
Woo! Can I just say one thing first? All right.
He wants it back.
No, I do not. Honestly, when I got this position last year, I couldn't wait for it to be done. I will tell you, it's been an honor to be the chair of this board and we got a lot of, we're getting a lot of things accomplished over the years and we look forward to another four years moving forward. Thank you, Commissioner Pop. Please take your seat.
I'll take your paperwork, because he's taking his. Sorry.
I did.
Get your phone out?
Yeah, I noticed, because I tried.
I get you some coffee?
Oh, boy.
You know, you should have just had that set before.
Well, you never know.
All thanks for the vote of confidence. And I'd like to welcome Commissioner Benoit to the board.
Thank you.
Forward to a year of working very closely with you.
Thank you.
We'll now select a vice chair.
I'll move for Commissioner Heinon for a vice chair.
Commissioner Heinon has been motioned in second. Is there any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations?
All in favor, Commissioner Heinon?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Approve or amend the agenda? Is there anything that we need to?
Yes, we have a few changes. Right after consent, if you could please add the auditor treasure item to designate the depository banks. Again, right after consent. Next, changes under highway. Chris's first item, it says, consider a letter of support. That should say, consider a resolution of support, please, for the Stock Rapids grant application, or a resolution of support. And then lastly, Chris would like to add, as his final item, the discussion about the Excel Energy Power Pole relocation issue.
Chair, I'll move for approval of the amended agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Open forum, is there anybody that wants input today? Nope. Okay. County board meetings are broadcast live and video recorded on YouTube. Please restrain from speaking from the audience area and come to the podium so that viewers can hear you. The county board observes Robert's rules of orders for its meetings, so comments generally reserved for the open forum segment of public hearing. However, public comment on other agenda items may be allowed at the discretion of the board chair. As we begin today, please turn off your cell phones and turn, or turn your cellphone to vibrate. Thank you. Consent agenda. We have items one through eight.
Move approval, Mr. Chair.
Second. Motion's been made in, and seconded to approve the consent agenda as items one through eight. Any discussion or anything want to be pulled? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Then we'll start with auditor treasure.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Mornings.
Good morning.
So, before you is the resolution to redesignate myself the authority to designate depository banks. Just looking for a motion signature on the resolution.
Was there one in our packet?
Yes. Should have been on the table.
That's what I didn't see.
I'll move approval.
Second. Motion's been made in a second to approve the designating depositories for the auditor treasure. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you, Christine.
Yep.
All right. Mr. Chair, are we ready?
Monty. Regular meetings for the county board for 2025.
Yes, sir. The scheduled regular meetings is, so it allows you to basically set your schedule and then those become your regular meetings and then you can amend your agendas during the year and no further posting is required once this is adopted. This follows the traditional pattern of first and third Tuesdays at nine AM with one exception. The December second meeting would be at six PM to accommodate the truth and taxation public meeting purposes. So again, just the first and third at nine, otherwise the one change on December second. Move for approval of the presented county board meeting dates.
Second.
It's been motioned in second. I have a question. So if we have a meeting that we need to change the date where it conflicts with something, we can still do that and post it?
Absolutely. It becomes a special meeting.
Okay.
And subject to three day posting requirement. Yeah, any change to the set schedule becomes a special meeting.
I think we did this past year, right? Didn't we have one?
We had one.
Yeah, you can always change the daytime, place.
And last year, Mr. Chair, last year, I cannot, it kind of went along with the Fourth of July, if I remember right. We wish we could have changed that at that point.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. Any other comments or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Designate the county newspaper?
Yes, sir. So another housekeeping item, the board is asked to then choose your official newspapers for a publication of county notices, for example, county board minutes, public hearing notices, ordinances, the annual financial statements, and so on. We received a bid from Star Publications to publish in the Stock Rapids Herald and Benton County News as noted in the agenda item. The Star Publications tells us they give us a 30% discount for publishing in both newspapers. They cite a 2.5% increase in its rates for 2025. I'll move for approval to designate the Benton County News and Stock Rapids Herald as the official newspapers of Benton County for 2025.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's been made in second for the newspapers to be designated, our Benton County News and the Stock Rapids Herald. I think they've done a fantastic job of covering us over the years, so I don't see any problem with that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Monty, have we ever had any other newspapers come forward? Yeah, to give a bid?
No, not, not in my recollection, no. It's always.
Just wondering.
When I first started here, I believe it was always Benton County News, but as a courtesy, the Stock Rapids Herald printed our minutes at no cost for many years. And there was change in ownership and how things were done, but, you know.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Henninger brought up to me that you guys were recipient of award too?
Yeah, we were. The Stock Rapids paper was named in a general excellence category for its coverage, but all our newspapers do well with our state associations who have recognized. And then, of course, our flip publication is the Dairy Star, which covers dairy in seven states. So, we're diversified in terms of what we do. We appreciate the county board, what you do with publishing our minutes. They're important. Public notices are extremely important to a free democracy and they're part of what we do, so thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I could too, Tim, thank you for being here at our meetings. I appreciate that. And you're not afraid to ask us questions and we need to be asked and I appreciate that too. So thank you for your part that you put forth for us.
Yep, about the openness, that's what we like.
And I think that Star Publication has grown a lot, because I can remember when it was this one small Stearns County Dairy Star paper. And they've, I mean, broadened, and, you know, broadened their horizons. I don't know how many papers you own, but it's a few.
We own six. I mean, we go from Foley all the way up to Sock Center. We have ninety-four, those are our weekly newspapers. We do special sections and then, of course, we do the Dairy Stars and Industry Magazine. We're your community newspaper. I mean, that's something that we really pride ourselves on. We need to talk to you about stories. We do it with common sense. We're human beings first and journalists second. That's how I fly and that's how a lot of our other folks fly. So, thank you for what you do. We appreciate it.
All right. Thanks for, you know. So we got a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Per diems, Monty.
It's been a past practice of the board to set the per diem for boards and commissions at your first meeting in January. These include, for example, planning commission, park commission, board of adjustments, always advisory and extension committee. Historically, the per diem for these commissions has been the same as the per diem for county board, which is currently $70 per meeting.
Move approval?
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the per diem rate for boards and commissions without, within the county? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say, second five is saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Consider the State of Minnesota Safe and Secure Courthouse Grant Agreement.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
We're missing one.
Oops.
That's all right, you'll catch up.
Consider.
Good thing you keep me in line. Consider Career Solutions appointment.
We were told that Career Solutions has a meeting yet this week and needs an appointee. I believe it's on the ninth at 3:00 PM and needs an appointee to ensure that they have a quorum. So asking for you all to make that appointment today and we can notify Career Solutions.
Mr. Chair, it's a joint powers board with two commissioners for Benton County and two commissioners for Stearns County and it's very important that we have a quorum. And we generally don't know if Stearns County always makes it, so it's very important that we elect a Benton County official with me.
Commissioner Benoit, are you interested?
Sure.
I'll make that motion?
It's yes.
And I'll second it.
Motion's been made in second to appoint Commissioner Benoit to the Career Solutions appointment. Anybody else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Congratulations, your first committee.
And we'll notify Carrie and we'll provide her with, that's folks, Career Solutions with Pam's contact information.
Already done.
Done?
It's already done, Monty, but go ahead and send a formal letter out if you'd like.
Got it. Okay, thank you, sir.
Consider the State of Minnesota Safe and Secure Courthouse Grant.
So, Mr. Chair, with the support of folks in our criminal justice system, judges, court administration and so on, sheriff's office, we applied for a safe and secure courthouse grant to install bullet resistant glass in court administration. And we were awarded a grant of $21,350 to install bullet resistant glass in court administration. It does require a 50% local match and we do have the resources sufficiently in our capital improvement plan, capital improvement fund, so those resources are there. So seeking your approval of this grant agreement to receive again, $21,350 for the bullet resistant glass.
Motion to approve the Safe and Secure Courthouse Grant Agreement to install bullet resistant glass in the court administration.
I'll second.
Motion's been made in second to the Safe and Secure Courthouse Grant. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, seems like a no brainer to me, anything we can be doing to make it safer over there.
We've never had this, Monty, before?
What's that?
We've never had.
This is the second grant we got. The first one was about three years ago and we got a grant for additional cameras in the court facility security system. So this is the second for us. Yep. Yep.
Any other questions?
Other than that, they really, really want this.
Okay. Motion's been made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, we're gonna schedule a closed session for the department heads annual performance.
Mr. Chair, we missed one.
Jeez.
Adopt, review and adopt the county board policy manual.
So, Mr. Chair, another housekeeping item, the county board adopted this county board policy manual first back in 2023. It was amended in 2024 and primarily to add the remote attendance provisions to it. So I thought it'd be good, your first meeting in January, to have this on your agenda to review, revise. So I'm just curious if you all have any recommending, recommend, revisions at this point. Mr. Chair, I'm gonna move for approval that we adopt the county board policy manual for 2025.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made in second for the county board manual for 2025. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, Monty, thank you for putting that together. I think it's a, it's a good document for all of us to read. And Mr. Chair, if I may, this is a good time, just a quick, quick refresher on the remote meeting participation ability. So, for example, if you're not feeling well and you're, you're under the care of physician, you can participate remotely from a non-public location up to three times per year. And again, that, your location doesn't have to be published three days prior. Just tell us you need the, you're gonna be remote and, and you're good to go. Then you can be remote up to, per the board's policy, four times per year, but that is from a public location. So we need to publish your specific address not less than three days before the meeting. So again, that was a board decision and you can use it four times for a board meeting and four additional times for convenes of the whole.
Total of eight.
Just a quick refresher on the remote participation provisions. And, Mr. Chair, one other small change that was made is it's in the continental US. I know when I first got on the board, I was actually out of the country and participated.
Oh, okay.
That's changed now to.
The United States of America.
Okay.
And I, I think one of the other changes we had is if it is the board chair, it would go to the vice chair to run, just for the ease of meetings.
Yep. That's very respectful to the other members.
Exactly.
Any other questions? Any other comments? Okay, we do have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Now we'll do the closed session for department heads performance.
So, Miss, it's that time of year to schedule closed sessions to meet with your department heads to conduct annual performance evaluation. So, you've got, let's see here, one, two, three, four, five, there's six. So I was wondering, do you want to try and have them all at one board meeting? Or maybe spread them out, maybe have three at one board meeting and three at another? It could make for a really long meeting if you had all six at one.
I mean, I would prefer to have three and three.
Three and three?
Basically, because if you have, you know, any comments or you want to have discussion by the time you get done with all six, it's like, who was I thinking about?
Yep.
Yeah.
I agree. So maybe over the next two meetings, we'll have three and then, then three at the last.
Okay.
Just, Mr. Chair, just a note, I will be on vacation our next board meeting, 21st.
Okay, so we'll then, we'll delay then and make sure that you're here.
I think I'm gonna be gone on the first board meeting and.
The fourth?
Yep.
Okay.
I'll let you know on that.
Well, yeah, we want to make sure that everyone is here. So again, these are important, but they're not like urgent that we have to have them right away. So we'll, we'll make sure that we schedule them on dates that everybody's here. Okay. Sounds good. I think that wraps up for me.
Sandy Schauberg, Human Service Director.
Well, I'm actually gonna ask Nikki Knowles to come up and present the board agenda item. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Nikki.
Nikki Knowles, Mental Health Supervisor. For those of you who don't know me, I am bringing before you a recommendation for approval of our projects for assistance in transitional homeless grant. It's actually called our, we call it our PATH grant. We applied through the four county community adult mental health initiatives. So, Stearns, Benton, Sherburne, Wright, applied for this grant to fully fund our outreach worker. She's been doing the work for quite a few years. We've been able to fully grant fund her. This is just another incentive to be able to do it, so each of the counties is getting fully funded that outreach. The grant is through August, August 18th, 2024 to June 30th, 2025. We have been told this is a renewable grant, so not sure how many additional years we'll get, but for sure, we will be getting it for the next year. The county applied for $226,076. That's gonna be for staff salary benefits, some direct assistance, which is helping with damaged deposits, first month rent, application fees, those things to get people set up in housing and also the administrative costs as Benton County is the fiscal host for our CAMI initiative. The grant allows, again, to fully fund our outreach worker. With this grant, we do have additional tasks and requirements that we need to do from the state. A lot of it is just really heavy paperwork with our HMIS system, which is a homeless information system. We'll need to be logging the contacts that we have, so it is a lot more computer paperwork heavy to support this grant, which means in turn, unfortunately, a little bit less time in the community for our current outreach worker to be doing her work within, at Salvation Army Lincoln Shelter and then running out to those camps and meeting people in the community. The need for homeless outreach in our community continues to grow. I think this has been a hot topic for quite a while in our county and neighboring counties. We're seeing, seeing overpopulated shelters and we have been seeing an increase of people living in RVs and cars. Our outreach worker's been seeing a lot of those parked RVs and having to outreach those people, see how we can help support them. We've also been seeing an increase in families and children experiencing homelessness. Just last month, we did have an individual that had been sleeping outside and ended up losing all of his toes due to severe frost bites. We continue to work with this individual at this point, trying to get services, supports and then hopefully long-term housing to eliminate that need. In the next month, there's gonna be another, a grant opportunity to apply through the state to possibly get another adult outreach staff to help support this growing need. But at this time, we're asking the PATH grant to be approved and then we get a docu-signed over to Commissioner Pop to be able to continue this needed work within Benton County for the current PATH grant.
Mr. Chair? Nikki, since, looks like we're about halfway through this contract already. It started in August. Hypothetically, going forward, the grant dollars do disappear and hopefully they don't, but if they do, are we gonna get some notification so we're not in a knee jerk reaction six months into a contract and having to decide whether or not we can fund that position?
We will. We already know it is renewable. Looking at the past, we have never received a PATH grant in Benton County. Stearns County has and it was a five-year rolling grant. So the hope is that'll be a rolling grant for a few years. But, of course, we're a little bit slower with getting our contract in place and everything, so we were able to build back to the 18th, but we are asking for the grant to be signed now.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
How many home or like encampments do we have? You know, you see the issues with Minneapolis right now with all the fires.
It's hard to say the numbers. A lot of our encampments are smaller, two, three, four tents in a certain area, so they are also harder to find. So a lot of times we'll get community members calling us and then through our BCAT team, our outreach worker and a lot of times the sheriffs will go out to those units. Very rarely, probably never, does she go out alone to those encampments. I would say we always have a few in the area. With colder weather, there is another program that's opening up to serve the churches, so a similar program to Church of the Week, which years ago we had. But we still have people sleeping outside. Example, the gentleman that we're not working with, but we have those examples every week of people that we encounter and working with.
Mr. Chair, Nikki, just an FYI, tell Victoria that we'll be scheduling another radio interview because Jake Caldwell wanted to talk to us in January to give an update on the homeless issue we're having in St. Cloud or in Benton County and Stearns County.
I'm sure she'll look forward to that.
She's done very well in the past. With that, I'll make a motion to approve the contract for the PATH grant.
Second. Motion's been made in second to approve the project for transitional transition PATH grant. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything you do.
Now move on to Chris Bird, County Engineer.
Wait a minute, one more.
What?
Commissioner Pop?
Yeah.
Mr. Chair? I gotta say, you don't have to follow the lead, because I did exactly what you did a year ago.
Okay.
I jumped ahead twice.
I'm just trying to get us on time.
Yeah.
Well, then why'd you have me speak?
Yeah. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
That is true. We got a hot topic coming up.
All right. Well, I believe the first item I have before you is to consider a letter of support to the Sock, oh, wait a minute. I got the wrong agenda item up. Letter of support to Stock Rapids to accompany their transportation alternatives grant. And then requested the agenda be amended to adopt a resolution for Stock Rapids to apply to active transportation grant. For them to construct a trail along Mayhew Lake Road between Osaka Road and that unnamed road, which is.
Water Tower.
Water Tower.
So, we've had some discussion in previous board meetings. Commissioner Heinon and Gepinski, we had a meeting with Stock Rapids last month, I think to gain a little bit better understanding. Whether they are in or out of the right of way, it was brought up that the, since there's an existing trail south of Osaka Road that was previously approved and constructed by the city of Stock Rapids, they'll need to tie in a new trail into this existing crosswalk. So even if they construct majority of the trail outside of the county road right of way, there will still even be a portion of it within the county road right of way to come into this tie-in point. Thus, the need for a letter of support. So, this trail project, they're applying to two different grant programs. It's confusing, because they're TA and AT. So, transportation alternatives only requires this letter of support from the county board. The active transportation grant program requires a resolution of support. And that's because it's, it's two different groups of people that review the applications with MINDOT down in St. Paul. So, yeah, there's the trail. We discussed the, you know, the concern about if we reconstruct Mayhew Lake Road at some point in the future, if the trail becomes, you know, in conflict with the roadway. I think there's an understanding, the city will be liable for some costs. We don't have hard numbers at this point of what that would be, but regardless, they're, they're still seeking a letter of support from the county board for this grant application.
Mr. Chair, so when we had that meeting with Commissioner Gepinski and Chris with the city, we outlined our concerns about having that trail in our right of way. You know, and let them know, you know, that if they do get this grant, hopefully they can move it as far out as the right of way as possible, so that in the future, if we do get that grant to rebuild that road, we won't have to rebuild that trail. Because once they put it in, and if it's in our right of way and we need it, we have to rebuild that trail.
Yeah. I think furthermore, Mr. Chair, I think furthermore, we all express the non-interest of rebuilding a trail that was paid for once by taxpayers.
Right.
So I think we're all on the same page on, on making sure the trail's in the right spot and it's not going to, it'll minimally affect the, the road moving forward.
So, Chris, is there good, hard language that says if, you know, if that does, the trail does affect the reconstruction, that the city's gonna pay for the moving and cost to do it?
I still think we have an opportunity. If they're successful in receiving the grant, they'll have to go through some engineering, which will be corresponding with their engineer. And their engineer understands, in the past, we've required them to acquire. a road right-of-way permit to construct and have equipment and stuff. I think that's an opportunity for us to put language into that permit that, that says some of these things. So that, that, that you're going to be in our right-of-way by permit. And, and some of these expectations on, on you as the constructor to relocate in the future will be expected.
Mr. Chair, excuse me.
Go ahead.
And question for Commissioner Gepinski and Heinand. You know, we can do that at that time, but is there really good understanding that at that time, that language is going to be put forth?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, we did have that communications with the city of Sauk Rapids in our meeting too.
Okay.
You know, so they're well aware of it, you know. The, the whole idea is to see if they can't get a little, get a little right-of-way from the school to where the school fence is, okay, and then split that to go that direction.
You know, and my only confirmation is we've had that issue with another city recently where they're like, well, we didn't know that.
Right.
Yeah. No, that was clearly brought up.
Yeah, it was.
Thank you.
Because, I mean, on the county road one in front of the school, we don't know. As we move forward for the RACE grant and that, you know, that, I mean, we may be lucky and get a pile of money out of that, and then we can do it the right way. But I, you know, I just don't want to see him put that there and then the county's on the hook for, you know, a million dollars or something to remove that trail.
You know, and we let the city know that, you know, in our design, if we get the RACE grant for their road, there is a trail already on that RACE grant form of where it's supposed to be. It's just the idea, we don't want to do it twice.
Yeah.
So with a letter, a draft letter of support, this is just some recommended language. The board can take it or leave it or come up with their own. I do realize that since we talked about this in previous years, I, I did have the former board chair's name in the signature block. So at a minimum, that would need to be updated. And then the resolution, was it, is here. So, and procedurally, maybe, could we do it as one motion? Or should we have two separate motions for the two separate documents? Or does it matter?
I don't think it matters.
Okay, so the board's wishes, then.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion's been made in second to approve the transportation grant application. And what was the other one?
So we've got to, to approve board chair's signature on the letter of support for the transportation alternatives funding and adopt the resolution of support for active transportation grants.
Okay, that is my motion.
Yep.
And your motion, that's your second. Okay, you've heard the motion, any other?
Mr. Chair, with the noted changes of the new chair.
Yes.
Yes. Name on it.
Very good.
Okay. Any other discussion amongst board members? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried.
All right. While we're on the topic of grants, that, uh, another city of ours. So, um, this would be another transportation alternatives grant application, but this would be to construct a trail along County Road fifty-five within the, the city limits of Rice. That, that grant application does require a resolution of support from the board because we would be the applicant, the county would be the applicant in this case. And I believe, yeah, Emma's here. Emma worked really hard on this grant application. So I believe you had the grant application attached in your packet, if you're, you're curious about that. One of the things that was expected of the city of Rice, since the trail is within the municipal boundaries, was the routine maintenance of that trail. And I believe they had a city council meeting last night and they adopted that resolution. So it sounds like the city of Rice is expected to complete the maintenance. If we are successful in getting the grant and the trail gets constructed, they will do the routine maintenance on that trail. So, yeah, so this would be considered a resolution of support to construct a trail. Now, this is that same grant program, transportation alternatives. The city, or the, since the county would be the applicant, we would be expected to come up with the local match. And the grant only covers construction costs. So engineering costs, many contract administration, things like that, would still be an additional cost that the, the county needs to be prepared to, to come up with.
Mr. Chair, so it's all going to be on the county, even if half of it's in the city of Rice? For cost sharing?
The way the grant application is written, the, yeah, since the county is applying for it, the county is, yeah, and, you know, willing to accept the, the local share. And I guess the engineering cost isn't for certain, but that would be an additional cost not covered by the grant. It would have to be arrived at somewhere. So I just brought, I was just trying to find the map. There's the map of the, the expected trail location along the east side.
How much of that is in the city limits?
My understanding was that the city limits borders the park property, which is, as you know, the park just completed a bunch of trail network in there. And that was to, this trail was to connect to the city or to the county park property.
Mr. Chair, just for clarification, Chris, so my understanding, you saying that the, there's a grant available to the county for eighty percent of the construction cost, but the county then would also be responsible for the twenty percent plus engineering and inspection?
Yeah, somebody would be, because that's not covered by the grant application. So.
And we don't know what that dollar amount is roughly?
You could.
Twenty percent of the three seventy-two?
But then he's got to.
Well, no, it would be an additional probably ten percent for engineering and inspection costs.
So it's the twenty percent match plus another ten percent?
I, yeah. I would expect that much for, for engineering of the, of this trail. It's a good budgeting number. Hopefully, we come in under that in actual costs.
And where do those funds come from?
If I can answer, this would be the third time we've applied for this grant. And in the past times, the, the board has agreed to supply the local match for construction. So in conversations with the city, they told us that the city could not participate in the construction costs, but they were willing to be responsible for maintenance. So that's the trade-off, I guess, is, is, do you feel that that's fair and reasonable? The county covers construction, the city covers maintenance. But again, that was made clear to me that the city could not participate in the construction costs.
And how are we funding the twenty percent and the ten percent?
Well, you know, there's resources sitting in CIP which could cover this, as they were the last two times that we applied. So the resources are there, so it really is more of a policy matter. Do you all, is that something you're comfortable with?
Mr. Chair, is there resources in the park?
You're reading my mind.
No, not in a, there's no part, park dedication, no. That's pretty built, used up, yeah, so.
Mr. Chair. I'll, albeit that it's a, it's a lot of money the county's got to come up with, I also believe it's reinvesting in our communities. And this is a pretty good-sized trail that hopefully we keep drawing people to move to that area. It would be a shame to turn down that kind of money.
I, I agree. The other part is that, you know, there's a forty-eight house development just to the, to the west of that, or it's, no, it's down right in where that little opening is there. Yeah, somewhere's in there. There's four, there, and I think they've got seventeen or so. I don't know, there's a bunch of lots already sold. And this is a, this, Chris, correct me if I'm right or not. This trail's going to be not connected to the road. It's going to be off-a-ways because we bought the property when we did the road, correct?
Yeah, the city, the city actually acquired additional easement so to construct this trail separated from the roadway, yeah.
Okay.
But.
There's going to be a, like a fair amount of space between the roadway and the trail, correct?
There may be about ten feet.
Yeah.
Because it's expected to be, you know, this is a ten-foot shared-use path for biking and walking. Yeah, with the shoulders that we have now on the roadway and the open ditch.
And the city did purchase the right-of-way, right, when we did that?
That is correct.
Correct, yep.
Okay. They do have some stake in the game already.
And I agree with that, Mr. Chair. I remember this coming up to us. And we told them, we, you know, we would like this, we would join in with them, but we're not paying for the right-of-way. And they did actually do all of that. Chris, I have a question. Explain maintenance.
Yeah.
Well, I think one of the things, when we first started talking about this trail, we didn't expect that, like in the wintertime, snow would be plowed, need to be plowed off. And I think we heard some from some residents that like, no, we want to be able to use this trail year-round. So, I mean, I think that's at a minimum, clearing the trail of snow in the winter. Other things may be litter removal, debris removal on the trail.
What about deterioration of the trail?
You know, any kind of paved surface does require some kind of maintenance, whether that's crack filling or something. I would think, just like a roadway, significant maintenance, like an overlay, that's, that's above and beyond routine. So is that a, the county function? I, I don't, I don't know.
That's why I asked the question, explain maintenance, you know, because if, if they're required to maintain everything, to me, that means if the trail needs to be resurfaced or something, that should be on them instead of on the county. But that's just my perspective.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
How, how many county paths do we have that we would, that we maintain currently?
Zero. Although we do have other paths in County Road right-of-way. They happen to be in Sauk Rapids.
Correct.
And Sauk Rapids maintains those trails.
Yep. So we're not changing precedence there.
Right.
Yeah.
So that part.
All of a sudden, they turn that back down.
Sauk Rapids did pay for the construction, like the one along Mayhew Lake Road that's already constructed. They, they applied for grants and they came up with the local match. They paid for the engineering of it. The one between Highway ten and Lake Station, that was part of a larger project funding package. And Sauk Rapids had a significant financial contribution to that. The one down the hill, that was a negotiated thing. We paid for sidewalk on one side. That project also received a grant for a trail on the opposite side. And, and Sauk Rapids' financial contribution on that project went towards the local match on that trail. So.
I believe that one was a want for Sauk Rapids, right?
Yeah.
And I don't think the county was.
We had one on one side already.
Yeah.
And that was part of the regional trails program too, though.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, it's, it's a good deal. And I think the maintenance part, you know, other than an overlay is pretty minimal. But some point in time, twenty years, thirty years down the road, you might have to have a maintenance overlay.
Correct.
Good point, Mr. Chair. How long would, would we be looking out on a overlay or something of that stature?
You know, it doesn't, well, I was gonna say, you don't have vehicle traffic, but removing snow, a lot of times, that's a skid steer or maybe even a plow removing that. I mean, you would expect fifteen years probably before you need to do something to the surface.
By that time, I would think the city, I mean, we should have something in there that says city of Rice is going to maintain these because of, if all of a sudden, you know, they, we take care of the overlay there in fifteen years, we might be in a little trouble. Some of them with Sauk Rapids coming back and going, well.
You overlaid that one?
Yeah.
Correct. And I, Mr. Chair, I agree, Commissioner Gepinski, I think it's got to be laid out in the maintenance agreement.
Yeah.
Moving forward.
But unless, Mr. Chair, unless I miss it, I didn't see the maintenance agreement in the resolution.
Uh, that was a separate resolution, and I don't think, uh, that was, is that part of the grant application? I know. Yeah, so it was just signed, so the resolution was just signed by Rice at their meeting last night. I don't know if there was a copy of that resolution included here.
And that resolution talks about the maintenance agreement?
It says maintenance. I don't know if it references or uses the word agreement.
Mr. Chair, so at this time, Chris, this is just for a letter of support for them to get this grant or to apply and get this grant, correct?
Well, it would be a resolution that would accompany the application that's due Friday, actually.
Right. So if they do get this grant, at that point in time is when we join into a maintenance agreement.
Yeah. So, uh, they're due now, I think springtime is when they announced the.
It's like April or so.
Yeah, the recipients of this. This would be for, I think, twenty twenty-nine money. So almost the way things are going with project development and environmental reviews, you know, if the county's successful in getting this grant, start looking at, you know, that preliminary engineering stuff in twenty twenty-five if it's successful. So that would include probably maybe some agreements in place, maintenance and stuff. So hiring a consultant, so on and so forth.
Mr. Chair, with you being the commissioner for the Rice area, I think we can, in my opinion, I think we could move forward if we so choose. And we continue these talks about the maintenance and we explained to Rice that we don't take care of any trails once they're built.
Right.
You know, the maintenance is all on them. But I think my, my side, I would make a motion to approve, moving forward with this grant application.
I'll second it. Motion's been made in second to move forward with the grant application for a trail for Rice. On that, I would, I would be pretty sure, you know, there's a lot of, a lot of people that want that because they want to get down to the park at a very safe way. You know, I think the maintenance part would be pretty easy to, to handle through the city. Yeah. So, I mean, there's a lot of people like, when are you going to build, you know, when are you going to build the trail along the road? And it's like, well, we got to apply for grants.
I'd agree, Mr. Chair. I just think it's going to be important that it's clear for both the county and the city.
Correct.
So with that, we have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Okay, Excel Energy presentation.
All right. As the Commissioners are aware, you know, we've been working with Excel Energy to relocate from transmission poles that would be in conflict of a new roundabout proposed at the intersections of Mayhew Lake Road and Thirty-Fifth Street. Our county stated Highway one and county stated Highway twenty-nine. Back in June of twenty twenty-four, the board reviewed and approved what was then known as an appropriations estimate to kind of get the process started on Excel's side. That appropriations estimate said that an estimated cost to relocate, well, there's one pole in conflict, but that requires two other poles to be reconstructed from wood poles to steel poles on concrete foundations. And that cost was estimated to be about nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. That appropriations estimate required Benton County to pay Excel Energy one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars to get the project started. And then that, that document referenced an appropriations relocation estimate would come later with, with some more detailed costs. My office received that updated estimate just before New Year's in December. And that's attached here. A couple of things to note to keep Excel moving to the next step in the process. Excel is expecting up to eighty percent of these new costs to be paid for by Benton County, but giving credit for the already paid one hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. So that number is a little over six hundred thousand dollars. It's expected at this time. I think that the number is in here.
Six seventy-two.
Six seventy-two.
Fifty-eight.
Nine fifty-eight would be what would be expected now, a check to be written. We were hoping that our roundabout construction would occur in twenty twenty-five. With the updated information, Excel is now proposing an in-service date of the end of September of twenty twenty-five. So looking at it internally, that most likely would preclude us being able to construct the roundabout in twenty twenty-five.
Does that do to, excuse me, Mr. Chair, what does that do to our grant dollars?
Still working on that through MINDOT State Aid and Federal Highway in, in St. Paul. We already knew as part of our roundabout construction, we were going to have to construct a bypass road. That's something that would most likely probably, we could still construct. We could get our plans finalized and approved by State Aid this winter, get our project authorization to go to a letting, but then write our project specs so that the contractor had to construct that bypass road in twenty twenty-five, but that the roundabout construction would happen in a subsequent year. What that does is shows that we incur costs, so we could seek reimbursement of a portion of our federal dollars and show that we started using those dollars in the, in the correct federal fiscal year. I should say the state fiscal year. So that, that's the key thing. To be able to keep our grant dollars, we need to have project authorization before the end of June of twenty twenty-five. And that means that our plans are approved by MINDOT State Aid and Federal Highways. And they, we have permission to go to letting. Um, and they, we have permission to go to letting then.
Mister Chair. Chris, it's a little disheartening for me because I was just out in DC, um, and talking with Senator Klobuchar, Senator Smith, uh, Mister Amer. And this was one of the projects that was brought up. Because they felt that, oh, they could do, you know, that they could be there for the Hzip grant opening. And then the following year, be there for the, uh, the, the, um, extension. And now putting this all into one, it's gonna make that area disaster right by a school in one year. This is not a good situation.
That's correct. That was our intentions, was to construct it in those months that school was not in session. Because as we know, there's a lot of school traffic with buses and, and those, uh, arriving, departing from the school. So we believe that we could get the roundabout circle and lanes constructed in that timeframe. But, um, even trying to do partial construction before that pole is relocated may not be ideal for the traffic flow through that if we were still constructing after school was in session in September.
Mister Chair, it is disheartening. Another issue we have in front of us is that we stand to lose four hundred thousand dollars for this project from the APO. If we cannot get it redirected for the next year, how is that gonna tie into, to what we're doing right now, Chris?
Yeah, so, uh, as you recall, we had two, uh, grants that we received. One of them was the Highway Safety Improvement Program Grant. That was seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to construct this. Then we received Carbon Reduction Program money, which was just under four hundred thousand dollars. So that was about one, you know, little over a million dollars we received of grant money to construct this. And that's the whole thing. To receive those grant dollars, we need to have this project authorization before the end of the state fiscal year, at the end of June of twenty twenty-five. Um, and so that's, that's our goal that we're striving for still to get that. Our, our road construction plans approved and authorized. There's another trigger that we have to have. We, we must incur costs within six months of that project authorization. Or a project becomes inactive. It's an inactive project in the terms of, uh, federal highways. Then that's when we have to start answering questions. It's like Benton County, are you gonna deliver this project? Or do you need to, you know, forfeit those dollars to some other entity? And that would probably mean it would go to some other project, um, within the state that, that was ready to go, uh, or something like that. So we, we don't wanna lose our dollars. Uh, we have a demonstrated need, a safety concern there with the crash history at that location. So, I mean, in response to the public, we need to address those concerns. If we lose the grant money, we'd be forced to do that with a hundred percent local tax, tax money.
Mister Chair, you didn't answer my question, Chris, about the four hundred thousand from the APO, though. I mean, where do we stand with that? I, I know, you know, Commissioner Kapinski's on the APO. I'm the alternate on the APO. We worked very hard to get this grant. You know, and, well, yeah, so I, I use those.
At this point, they're both being kind of treated the same. The Hzip and that Carbon Reduction Program, uh, dollars from the APO. They, they're both at the same level of risk if we don't have our project authorized and start incurring federal eligible costs within six months of authorization. So if we, if we can't deliver the project, it would go to most likely another project in the APO region, um, that, that is ready to go and eligible for the dollars.
Mister Chair, can I ask?
Sure.
So Chris, these costs that are incurred, this money that we have to pay forward to Excel Energy, it would not be considered part of the project expense?
Uh, no, that's a good, good question. The, those grant dollars, uh, the Hzip and the carbon reduction, the one point million dollars can only go towards road construction costs. So that's where, you know, utility relocation costs have to come from local sources. And that's why we pursued other grants to try to, um, offset some of those costs.
Mister Chair.
Chris, when did we pay the hundred and thirty-four thousand again?
Uh, that was in June, June twenty-something of twenty twenty-four.
How are we, I mean, this has not been a, a secret.
Uh, cor- correct. Um, yeah.
Is there somebody better that can answer this?
Yeah. So, uh, I believe Excel Energy, uh, uh, we have some members in the audience here. One of the concerns that I think we had was that appropriations, I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, scoping estimate that we signed in June had some timeframes laid out. One of which was engineering and the engineering timeframe was fifteen weeks. And it had some language in there. Fifteen weeks, get started from when all the signatures or the last date of the signature on this agreement. And there was multiple Excel Energy signatures already on that agreement. And it appeared that Benton County was one of the last ones. So we anticipated that engineering would take about fifteen weeks or so after signing that agreement, the last week in June. Which that puts at, uh, let's see, June, July, August, September sometime, let's say October. We learned that October was about the timeframe that Excel Energy had finalized their contracts with an engineering consultant to start the engineering. And I think that's now that we're looking at, instead of like an early summer, a late summer, in-service date, that may be some of the concerns that, that we had as an engineering department, county highway engineering department. But yeah, like I acknowledged to Excel in the audiences, I don't know if the board is interested in asking them direct questions, if that's permissible or not.
I, I would like to ask, ask that direct question because as we know with phased projects, we're gonna end up paying more on taxpayer money to get this job done. The only one here that's gonna be made whole is Excel Energy. And we paid them back in June. So I think, I think it's time we ask the direct questions.
Yep, please.
Uh, good morning, Board. Cody Holmes, uh, Excel Energy Transmission Project Manager. I'm here to, you know, answer your questions, but also we have Josh Tomlinson, uh, uh, from Excel Energy also, uh, via video. He may be able to talk to the fifteen weeks.
Chris, can you minimize so we can see the, the go-to screen? If, if, if it's Josh, who, who's joining us again?
Josh.
Josh? Let's see, is Josh up there?
Josh Tomlinson, yes.
Yep.
Okay.
So he's the, the project, the direct project manager who has been working with Chris and his team, team on this. Um, so, um, speaking to the timing of the fifteen weeks and the, uh, engineering that has been, uh, or when it was started and where we are with the process with our relocation and signing of that scoping estimate. Um, and Josh, if you're available, you can, uh, just, I guess, give a brief update to the board as far as engineering getting started, you know, when, when we and where we are with coordinating the, uh, drawings and just initial engineering that, that was completed so far or up to that point.
Yes, hello, guys. Uh, thank you for having me today. I appreciate. Oh, can you guys hear me right now?
You're, you're loud and you can turn your camera.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna turn it down. We're cool. I got it.
My apologies to the board.
There we go.
There we go.
Thank you.
Yes, for an update from engineering, um, I, I understand the fifteen-week timeline that was, uh, put into the scoping estimate. Um, that fifteen weeks essentially starts when we bring on the engineering team. Um, as an update for where we are now, um, that update would be that we have finished our final designs. So, uh, from when we started our initial engineering process, uh, in October, uh, we have finished those designs by the middle of December, which is where we are now with that, uh, appropriations estimate that was, uh, submitted to Chris Bird, uh, on the first.
Mister Kapinski?
Um, Josh, with that being said, when you guys finalize your signatures and get this engineering going, that's when we should have paid the money, the hundred and thirty-four thousand, in my opinion. Not back in June.
I think it's.
Yes, understood. So, uh, I, I can touch on that too. Um, so that's first scoping estimate is essentially just paying for the design work to see what, uh, resources are gonna be required and what design work is gonna be needed. Um, the secondary estimate that has been provided to you, which is the appropriations estimate, um, that is a much more accurate and all-encompassing estimate that, um, allows us to purchase the material. That initial sum of a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars just paid for the design work. Uh, the secondary payment that we are requesting now is for the actual material. Um, wi- without that secondary, uh, payment, uh, we typically do not move forward.
No, I, I, I a hundred percent get that, Josh. But when we paid you back in June for the hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, that didn't start until October.
The design work.
The design work.
Yeah.
And, and, and I guess, you know, there was design work and engineering work going on, um, as far as, I'll call it internal labor. And Josh, you can speak to that. I know, you know, the, the final design was gonna be executed well, at the end of October when the design firm was brought on, but we, there was work being done before that. I mean, so it wasn't sitting at a standstill. There was work being completed.
We, Mister Chair, we were led to believe after we signed that hundred, for that hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, that the engineering would only take fifteen weeks. Here we are thirty-five, forty weeks into it, and now it's just starting. So we've lost, in our, my opinion, we've lost fifteen weeks on this project and we're trying to understand how or why.
More importantly, we lost the summer of construction.
Correct.
Yeah. Which puts, you know.
Something I'd like to point to as well is, uh, past that scoping estimate that was originally discussed, uh, we also were instructed by, uh, Benton County to identify different options uh, that might save the county money and time. Um, that allocated our internal engineering team that originally put together that scoping estimate to, uh, identify different options. Uh, so that did postpone our final design work.
Any other comments? I guess, you know, we're at this point now. And is there anything Excel Energy can do to speed up this process?
Uh, yes, sir. So we were actually, uh, like I mentioned, we typically do not, uh, order material prior to the signatures on the appropriations estimate. Um, we, we went ahead and shouldered that burden, uh, for Excel Energy. Uh, typically, like I said, we don't, uh, order material, long lead time material, and we've gone ahead and done that. Uh, we streamlined our process to actually order some geotechnical services, uh, so some soil boring, uh, that, uh, had a longer lead time as well. Uh, but seeing as though we would, uh, essentially blow our schedule if we did not start that earlier, um, we greenlit that about a month ago. So we're really trying to expedite this as fast as possible. One of the pro, uh, one of the options that we do have is maybe making some construction, um, compromises where we might be able to do construction in tandem with, uh, the county's work on the road.
Okay, well, that's, that's a good comment. I mean, if we could.
What, what do you mean by that, though?
They could coordinate the construction of the line, I believe, at the same time as the county's construction, constructing the roundabout?
But.
Chris had spoke to that. And, um, and, and that would be something we could do, but I, I don't know if the county.
The timing isn't gonna be, you're talking in September.
I think this big, the big unknown right now is materials, materials delivery. I mean, that's what, um, Josh and others have shared now that their material supplier can't guarantee delivery of materials until August. So that, that's a risk too. If we open up the project and we get to a point where we can no longer proceed with road construction because of, then the project sits idle, uh, closed, whatever, traffic driving through a work zone until materials are delivered. So that's kind of a risk. Do we open up a project if we don't have confirmed delivery, uh, of materials? That's a risk that we would have to assume if we let a contract and a contractor bids on our project expecting to construct it during this timeframe and then we have to tell them to stop at some point. Um, we would have to assume that risk to that, that road construction contractor.
You know, what, what was the total cost of the roundabout? Um, the, the design? That's, that's another thing. I, I'm sitting here, I think most of the public look at it and say, you're designing three poles and it's a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars.
Yeah, we, well, our design contract with our consultant for the roundabout design was, uh, right at two mil, two hundred thousand dollars.
For a whole roundabout?
Uh, we're looking at construction cost of our roundabouts, a little over three million dollars.
Construction and the design?
Yeah.
No, just for construction.
So Mister Chair, that, that's, that's one part of it. I look at it this way, and, and I'm, I'm not trying to grandstand here at all. But I'm telling you, you, you look at it, nine hundred and some thousand dollars to move three poles. And then we're on the hook for moving the construction date to a whole nother year, which puts the county potentially online for losing grant funding. And you guys are a for-profit. I mean, I, we're told, oh, we gotta tread carefully so that we, we got our, we got our team on board on this. I, I look at it from the other side, wait a minute here. Maybe this gotta go further up the, up the hill to, to the, you know, other higher up elected officials. Because I feel like we just got, I mean, we're, we're gonna be basically given a situation that we gotta tell the, tell the taxpayers why they're gonna pay more money on a phased project because we don't wanna lose these funds. We're gonna have to start the project and have it cost more in the end. So not only is, is Excel gonna have three brand-new poles, which, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, we never got credit for, right? The depreciation?
There's, there's two, two new poles.
Two new poles, but steel poles that the count, that taxpayers are paying for to increase their transmission line.
I, I, I see what you're, you're asking, like, basically depreciation costs. We're, we're paying brand-new costs for an asset that has a depreciated lifetime because we know those have been in the ground for forty-plus years already. And, but yeah, and we're, we're paying.
Full price.
Price, uh.
At their timeline.
Yeah.
Mister Chair, a question for Josh. Josh, I assume Excel was aware of our construction timeline?
I do not have a record of any explicit timelines other than trying to have construction completed in the year twenty twenty-five.
Chris?
Um, yeah, I mean, to, to their credit, uh, we, we first notified them in March of, uh, twenty-fourth when we started having these discussions with relocation. Um, I'm just bringing it up on the scr- screen, the scoping, uh, estimate. Now granted, uh, this scoping estimate, you know, has terms like proposed in-service date of three thirty-one, twenty twenty-five that would have fit in with our, our timeframe. Um, this is where the costs were laid out. This is where the hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars here. This is where the scoping estimate said, schedule starts upon return of this estimate, the associated agreement and payment for engineering. So that's, that's where the county comes from, that, well, we thought that based on this statement, fifteen weeks would start when we signed it and sent a, a check. Um, I will note, there's a number of Excel Energy signatures here, except for one. Um, but, you know, even if that still need to be acquired, we, we signed it in June of twenty twenty-four with a check mailed. I mean, it was mailed, so we'll give a couple.
So called July one.
But, um.
Assume that was cashed.
Yeah, um, that's, that's where, if engineering had proceeded, uh, within fifteen weeks, could the construction have been backed up fifteen weeks sooner instead of September? Was that, would that mean a newer in-service date of instead of March thirty-first, twenty twenty-five? Uh, May or, or June of twenty twenty-five?
Mister Chair.
So the original estimate was nine thirty-five and now it's nine ninety-seven too, so it went up.
Uh, that is, that is correct. So now we're looking at a more detailed estimate, um, with some additional, yeah, costs. And I, I don't have a good answer. Uh, that would be an Excel question. If, if there's some explanation of why the cost increased?
I mean, you, you guys, put yourself in our shoes. I mean, we've, we've got a roundabout that has ma- many accidents on it. And now we're putting off, uh, potentially building this because of this transition line and these poles that we thought we had going back in, end of June, beginning of July. If we would have had that going, my guess is, is we would have made that. So we need to explain to the people sitting in here and online and, and everybody else going, why, why should we pay for more on a phased project? And it, you know, Excel gets not only, you know, the nine thirty-five, which was orig- a rough estimate, now we're almost at a million dollars, just short, two thousand dollars short of a million.
And, and Josh, you can speak to it, or I, or I will. The, the, the rise in cost, um, the majority of that is, uh, the easement acquisition that has had to take place. Uh, originally, uh, we were assuming the county was going to acquire those easements needed from the property owners, and now Excel Energy will be, uh, working to acquire those, those easements that are needed to reroute those poles, or reroute the line. So, um, and Commissioner Gepinski, I, I, I understand your, you know, your frustration and the whole, the whole boards. I, I understand that, and, you know, I, you know, I, I, if, if we could have gone back and, and, you know, done that, I, I, I think we were working towards that. I think there were other, uh, engineering, you know, design and reviews going on at the same time, where, um, we didn't have a final design, and until we had that, we weren't gonna be able to order these long lead materials. So, so I, I understand your concern, and, you know, I, I, I wish it could be better, and, and I, uh, I, I know, you know, we want to work with Benton County, and we wanna, you know, see what we can do to help and execute this in twenty-five if possible, you know, that's, that's our goal as well, so.
Okay. I, I know you guys are the, the, the carriers of the, of the message right now, and I get it. I, you guys are kinda at the firing line, if you will, but, you know, I, we gotta be good partners moving forward on everything, 'cause we can't do this without you guys, and, um, it just, it's disheartening, because it's, is, Excel's a big company. Is there, these are specific poles, there's nothing in anybody's yard that you can borrow from?
That's, that's not how we, that's not how we operate. Pick and pull. We, that's, uh, our standards are, you know, something that are hard and fast, and will, and will, like, we're installing steel for many different reasons, but, but that's, uh.
Well, I would sure hate to have two of these poles sitting in a yard that's gonna get used in twenty twenty-six, but you got them on for a big project, and they can't be pulled for.
Understood that, yeah. These are, you know, designed specifically for, for these loadings and, uh, designed for this, you know, different tensions and, and, uh, and factors.
What's, what's really weird is I, 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 I do design cell towers, and I can get two four-hundred-foot cell towers for this, for these two poles. That's amazing. Just I throw that out there.
Mr. Chair, uh, the question I think is for Josh. So when we write out a check for six hundred and seventy-two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-eight dollars, and that gets to Excel and you guys cash it, at that point in time, you order the materials, and at that point in time, do you have a understanding of probably when the materials will be ready?
Uh, yes, sir. So typically on the, uh, on the first order, when we submit a P O, uh, we contact our vendors, and the vendors will give a delivery date that is, uh, a suggestion, but also one that they are committed to. And those, those dates are typically pretty set in stone. So as we've submitted our long lead time materials, we should hear back within the week or two, uh, determine what, uh, our delivery dates are. For our scheduling purposes, we do have, uh, it logged in a schedule at this time with estimated lead times that we've seen as in, uh, industry standards. So we have a very decent idea of what we're looking at for, uh, our material. But that was with the, uh, that was with our intention to get our A E signed and our material ordered at a, a timeframe that was comfortable to the county, but also to Excel, so we can meet that in-service date of the end of September. So as it stands now, uh, with our material ordered, we should still be able to, uh, meet that in-service date at the end of September.
But that, that's, that does nothing for Benton County. That's what I'm, that's what we're trying to say, is it, we can't get the roundabout done until twenty twenty-six now. It meets your in-service date, not the county's.
My, my follow-up question is that, when you go ahead and put a P O, and they give you an idea of when the materials will be ready, and if the materials are ready sooner, could this project be done sooner on Excel's part?
Good question, Mr. Commissioner. I would agree that that would be, uh, a possibility. Um, we can reach out to our vendors and see if they can move this along in any way, um, if they can expedite it. I will point to the steel vendor drawings that we just submitted. That is probably our largest risk for the project, and I think that would be the one that we'd have the hardest risk of, of painting, um, and earlier. Um, we can work to see if that's a possibility. Um, I had our engineering team actually do so yesterday. Um, so we should hear back and see if they can, uh, expedite it in any fashion.
Thank you.
Yeah, all right.
Could we get a letter from them too?
If you get, yeah.
Because I, I feel like there's, there's less of lead time than it was a year or two ago.
A point of clarification here, is, are you asking for a letter from?
From the steel manufacturer.
Or a copy.
Or a copy, yeah.
Copy of the letter.
Absolutely.
Chris?
Uh, if I may, uh, Josh, could you confirm, uh, the ordering of materials? Because earlier you indicated that, um, to kinda keep things expedited, Excel had already ordered the materials. Is that true, or is it still not confirmed until you issue what you just referenced, a purchase order or a P O?
Yes, a good question. Uh, ye- uh, yesterday, our P Os went out. So those are sitting in pending internal, uh, our, our construction management team needs to, uh, approve them, and then it goes out to the vendor. Uh, so that's a part of an internal process that, uh, precludes actually getting a response from the vendor.
Commissioner Gepinski? So, so what, what did you mean that went out a month ago that you were helping the county out on then?
That was the geotechnical service, so that was a soil boring. So that was a process that is done for construction to understand what needs to be done for foundation work. But the lead time to, uh, to get that test done, for someone to go out and do soil boring, uh, the lead time on that was about six months, and, uh, to get returns on those tests would have been well with, in our construction, or well without our construction window, so it would have delayed the project if we had not done that a month ago.
Okay.
They need the soil borings before they can do.
Right, yeah.
Yep, pretty much that.
Mr. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Johnson?
Josh, I would have to assume Excel Energy is probably one of the very largest buyers of this type of material from the vendor that you're using. Would that be a fair statement?
I would agree with that.
So is it, is it possible then with that, that Excel can put a little pressure on the vendor to move those items up? I mean, again, you're, you're probably, I, I can't even think about the dollar amount that you'd be spending on these vendors in a year, but, you know, as, as a way to put a little pressure on them to get this, this product in front of us as soon as possible.
Fair question. I would, I would say that we actually are string, uh, using our relationships now to actually guarantee those delivery dates and to work with them to get a favorable lead time. Um, the process to design and to, um, manufacture those poles is what we're looking at now.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else, any other questions? Um, Tim?
Chair Powell, question for county engineer.
Sure.
Chris, you mentioned Excel used a consulting engineering firm on this project. Can you elaborate on that? And can Excel explain, is that common industry practice to kick it back to consulting engineer and not do it in-house?
Uh, I, I would say our design team has been conferring and communicating with, uh, a consulting engineer that had been, as part of this, these conversations as early as March of twenty twenty-four. And I think some of the correspondence that Josh has shared, and I think it's that same individual that now Excel is contracting with. Uh, this individual works for a, a large consulting firm that, that, that I'm familiar with, um, H D R. So that, that's been our understanding that, yeah, Excel has hired a consulting engineer to do the design work. As far as industry standard, I'll, I'll defer to Excel to answer that question.
And this is Cody Holmes, and I can answer that one. Yes, yes, it is our common practice that we have internal engineers, but also we have a large staff of consulting engineers who work and, and complete the consulting engineering for us, for Excel Energy.
Are they experiencing a backlog, or did they experience a backlog during this process or not?
I can't say.
All right, thanks. Any other questions or comments? I guess my question would be is to, between Chris and Excel Energy, once you know that, uh, the delivery date of the poles, can you work at the same time? Or do we need to get Excel Energy out of there before we start construction or do anything?
I think I'll leave that one to Chris, as far as, you know, the coordination, and he had talked about before, about, uh, you know, not opening it up, and then with the chance we don't receive it, and then having.
Right. But someplace in there, you're gonna have to have a delivery date.
Yeah.
I mean, so when you hit the delivery date, is that the time, Chris, we could start? I mean, they're not gonna come the middle of August and say delivery's gonna be September one. It's probably gonna be, you know, somewheres, I would think, quite a bit earlier than that.
It, see, due to our, our statutory requirements for publication of bids and things like that, y- you gotta back the timeframe up, so. Think about when do we wanna construct it? Uh, say we wanna start construction as soon as they're in the ground, let's just assume that that's September. Uh, it takes about a, a month before that, we need to be at least awarding a contract, so let's say that's August. It takes a month before that, that we start advertising the bid, so that's July. Um, those things, if we're starting to prepare a bid advertisement in June timeframe, will we know in June that we have confirmation that the material will be here i- in August? So that we go ahead and start that ball rolling downhill. Once we start that ball rolling downhill, it's hard to stop it, and we start assuming risks, or we put that risk on the contractors, which we end up seeing in bid prices and, and so on and so forth. So, um, the lowest risk would be to wait till it's clear and then proceed to a, a bid opening. So I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure how to answer the question, Commissioner. Equating it to level of risk, and how much risk are we comfortable with, with assuming?
Yeah.
Which, in our, in our world, risk equals dollar signs, so.
And a P R nightmare.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's dollar science for everybody.
Sitting here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
You live in Benton County by chance? Yeah. So you don't have to pay for this.
I just wanna correct something I said. I just checked my correspondence. We started corresponding, it looks like, with this Cody Oswald of H D R Engineering in the, at the end of June, talking about design, uh, I think, so.
End of June?
Yeah, I, I would just have, uh, emails here, um, that show June, June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four. There were some email correspondence with Cody Oswald to start, working with Benton County on, uh, option design, option.
So why did it get going in October? Can Excel answer?
I guess I, I guess from my, my assumption, and Josh, you can confirm, you know, if, if, you know, if they were working through preliminary design from that June, you know, that fifteen weeks, and then final design started at that point, that, that was my assumption, Josh, and if you, if there's something further clarifying, you can speak to that.
That is correct. So in June is when I, uh, when they started working on those two additional proposals that were asked to be, uh, uh, provided by Benton County to see if we could lessen the, uh, expense and shorten the timeframe. Um, after identifying this, it looked like, uh, working with Chris, the determination was to proceed with the original estimate and timeframe. Um, so that was determined, I believe, also in June.
That was the relocation of the road, maybe?
Yeah, we looked at, yeah, we looked at that, we looked at, yeah, moving that existing pole a little bit farther north and changing the alignment.
Mr. Chair, I, I don't see any other way around this. We gotta do it. I mean, it's no different than my house. I, I don't get, uh, a chance to say I don't want Excel. I have to pay whatever they choose to ta- pay, you know, charge me.
It's just frustrating that.
No, this, this is at this point.
Yeah, I mean, we have to move forward and probably hope for the best, and hopefully we're, you know, Benton County and Excel Energy are good enough partners that everybody moves as fast as they can on this.
I don't, I, from my standpoint, I don't wanna put the county at more risk.
No.
At this point, we can't.
We, we can't. If they got a projected, uh, proposed service date at nine twenty-six, twenty-five, unfortunately, we're gonna have to work with that.
Either way, this is gonna be a phased project now, and the county's gonna pay more.
We can't, yeah, we can't get it all done.
Or, or we lose the money. The only one here that is not going to lose the money is Excel.
Right.
Only, and they're.
Well, you mentioned at the beginning, they'll, they'll be the one that's hole in this.
Yep. All right.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, by Excel, we are guaranteed nine twenty-five completion date.
Nine twenty-five, yeah.
Okay, a- and I know we need that earlier, but irregardless, i- if they can push to get it done earlier, that's great, but we are one hundred percent guaranteed a nine twenty-five completion date.
And, and thank you for your question. Um, you know, I will, I will say no, because, you know, there are some factors that are outside of Excel's and are, you know, like something that could happen with the supply chain and, uh, steel pole vendor or other equipment, hardware, insulators, or conductor that, that we need to do this work, you know? So as of right now, you know, we've, everything will be ordered, every, the timeline, construction crew is scheduled, and everything will be ready to complete by end of, end of September, but I, I can't, uh, co- commit one hundred percent to, you know, it will be done, knowing there's some factors outside of our.
So you're not saying there's no hard timeline?
No, with weather or any other factors.
Well, that's why it's a proposed service date.
Yeah, and, Mr. Chair, even at that, at that point in time, it ain't gonna matter, because that puts our construction regardless in twenty-six.
I mean, we gotta have the poles relocated. I guess we're gonna have to look at options on partial construction or something, if we have to eat up some A P O grant money or something there.
Sure hope we're not in a position where we've got to eat up grant money.
Yeah.
Well, either way, it's, I mean, we all know, a phased project, it's gonna cost more money.
Yep.
And obviously, Excel, you're, you're not gonna pay for that?
No.
Okay. So you're not gonna pay for that, not give us a firm timeline. Not a lot of real good answers today.
No, there isn't, and I, I.
Well, we gotta go back to everybody in the room and, and the county and explain why it's gonna cost us more money.
And then we have to go to our grantee, A P O, and ask for forgiveness, because we can't, uh, pursue and use that money in twenty-five.
Maybe we'll just start with the legislators and next, next, let them know.
Okay.
All right. I'll move approval.
Second.
Motion. Made in second to approve the Excel appro- appropriations estimate timeline. Any other discussion?
It'd be for the six hundred.
Oh, to pay for the six hundred thousand.
Six seventy-two, nine fifty-eight.
And, and cut him a check for six seventy-two, ninety-eight.
Mr. Chair, if I could, could I get clarification on, um, who's signing it? Would the, is the board desire the board chair or the authorizing the county engineer to sign that agreement? It, I will note, the signature block has my name, but we could actually, we could easily have the board chair sign that. Uh, just maybe have some clarification of who's being authorized to sign the agreement.
I think, I think Chris can sign it, correct?
Thank you.
Yep, I would agree with that.
With the county engineer signing it. Is that okay with your motion?
Yep.
Second, all right. Any other discussion on that?
Thank you for trying to explain. I know this was hard for you guys to come in front of us.
Thank you for hearing us out, I mean, I, yeah.
It's just that you have to understand our position too.
Yeah. All right, we got a motion and a second on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, carried.
I have no further items.
Okay. Commissioner, meeting updates?
No, screw it, go into that one.
Go to this one?
Yeah.
Well, you have one.
Oh, I got one, yeah.
You can use, yeah, go into that one right away.
We'll do the public health, I'll turn it over to.
Monty.
Monty for.
Just a quick housekeeping, next to Mr. Chair, so, uh, call the order, looks like everybody's here, still here. Uh, we need nominations for, we, for Chair of the Community Health Board.
Make a motion for Commissioner Heinen.
Second. Commissioner Heinen has been nominated as Chair of the Community Health Board. Any other nominations? Not hearing none. All those in favor of Commissioner Heinen as Community Health Board Chair for twenty-five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Commissioner Heinen, it's all yours, sir.
Great. Now that I've been re-elected Chair, thank you, everybody. Now we've gotta go through the process of a vice chair for the, uh, Community Health Board. Nominations, please?
I'll nominate Commissioner Benoit.
I'll second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, thank you. Vice Chair, Commissioner Benoit, approve or amend the agenda, anything? Commissioner Benoit, approve or amend the agenda, anything, Monty or Jaclyn?
Move for approval, Mr. Chair, second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion? If not, I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Uh, consent agenda item, we only have one.
Uh, did you do the meeting, the meet, the schedule of meetings?
Oh, sorry, we'll back up, oh.
Catchy.
I've only been Chair of this for how long? Uh, sorry, schedule the regular meetings, Community Health Board for two thousand and twenty five, which would coincide.
Absolutely, it mirrors your county board, same dates, kinds, yeah.
So moved, second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Now we'll go to the consent agenda item, we only have one, what would you like to do with that?
Move approval.
Yep, second.
Thank you, we got a motion and a second, any further discussion? Now I'll call the question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries, Jaclyn, anything? Thank you very much. At this point in time, the Community Health Board is adjourned at ten thirty, and I'll turn it back over to the board chair.
Now we'll move on to ditch. Move to ditch, okay, same thing, call the order, we'll call, everybody's here. Are there nominations for the two thousand and twenty five Chair of the County Ditch Authority?
I nominate Commissioner Johnson.
Commissioner Johnson has been nominated, are there any other nominations? Hearing none, all those in favor of Commissioner Johnson as Chair of the Ditch Authority for twenty five, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, Commissioner Johnson, it's all yours, sir.
Thank you, Monty, members. I will move on to selecting the Ditch Authority Vice Chair for twenty twenty five and open up those nominations.
Motion.
Go ahead.
Motion to elect Commissioner Pop as Vice Chair.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for Commissioner Pop, are there any other nominations? Any other nominations, any other nominations? That will act on Commissioner Pop as the Vice Chair for twenty twenty five, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, thank you, Commissioner Pop.
Thank you too for stepping up on this, this is not a fun committee, and I think you can see that we all jumped to nominate others on this.
Yep.
So we do seriously appreciate what you guys do.
We're moving forward, we're getting things.
Thank you, appreciate the support. All right, move on to approve or amend the agenda, Chris, any changes to our ditch authority agenda for today? Any additions, all right? Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve our agenda is presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, schedule our regular meetings of our ditch authority for twenty twenty five.
Mr. Chair, again, this mirrors your county board meeting dates, uh, but I should mention though, and you did this with in two thousand and twenty four, the second meeting in August is considered the annual meeting, consider the maintenance assessment, so that's just the difference from county board. To note that, August nineteenth, to consider maintenance assessments, your annual meeting, okay?
Is there a motion?
I saw move.
Okay. I'll sec- I'll second it. Uh, to approve the scheduled meetings for ditch authority for twenty twenty five is presented, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, it's carried, uh, we do have a consent agenda item, approve or amend the meeting minutes from December seventeenth of twenty four.
Move approval.
Their second?
Second.
Second, any other discussion on the meeting minutes from December seventeenth of twenty four? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain.
Thank you for the abstention. You have your abstention, Beth? Okay, thank you. Any other business, Chris?
Mr. Chair, I apologize, uh, I did realize that there's some individuals here that was anticipating there would be an open forum as part of the ditch authority meeting, not the regular ditch meeting. So we have some individuals here, I think, that would like to speak on the open forum.
Okay, thank you. If there's individuals here, if you could please come to the podium and state your name and address, or I'm sorry, it's already written down here, thank you. Him and Mike Rukuski, if you'd be willing to come forward and and just give your name and address for the record, and we'd be happy to hear you.
Tim Rukuski, I live at, uh, six seven five Palm Creek Drive in St. Cloud, Minnesota, and.
My name is Mike Rukuski, I live at thirty three sixty eight Little Rock Road, in South Rapids.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
We filed a petition, um, for the county to abandon ditch four. I had some conversations with Chris Bird about it, this, I don't know if it's, I guess it's not up on the screen, but anyways, ditch four is is, uh, like two thousand eight hundred and thirty five feet long, it's it's on a seventy five acre parcel that Mike and I own together, and then a very little portion of it, where it comes to the road, is owned by Jim Gans. And, uh, so we went to and we got a bunch of signatures from the from the landowners, and then we filed a petition, and then the petition was rejected because, um, unknowns to us that, uh, you can't accept a petition when there's outstanding assessments. Well, um, we weren't aware of that, but obviously, um, there'll always be outstanding assessments. So we wanted to come here ahead of time before the next meeting, and we had some questions, um, with the, the total assessment's fifteen thousand. And Mike and I, um, we we got a bid, uh, you know, to clean the ditch for much, much less than that one time annual fee. We understand, um, from Christine that there's a negative balance on ditch four of six thousand nine hundred and fifty nine dollars and sixty cents. To date, there's only been a thousand one hundred and nine dollars and eighty eight cents collected on these assessments. So I guess what we're wondering, um, is if Mike and Jim and Lewis Meyer and Jansen paid their their assessments, that'll take about ninety percent of this total away. And if we pay the remaining balance of that, can we go ahead with the petition? And then our second question in regards to that is, the fifteen thousand that's assessed annually on this, minus the negative balance, um, roughly, there'd be about seven, what happens to that seven thousand dollars if and when you would grant the the ditch to be returned back to us?
Okay.
The other question I wanna have you clarify is, is, uh, how did they come up with this six thousand for just looking at the ditch when we can get it cleaned for three thousand? I mean, there was nothing done, nothing was ever done on that ditch. The guys that I bought the property from, Rich Rukuski and Alvin Yocum, had it cleaned out in two thousand and one, they had to go to the AFC office and got approved on it. So that ditch was never a county ditch, which I realized that the statute made them take them over, but it was never looked at, never cleaned, you know, so this is why, you know, I get this here, stuff is just like the thing you had before, pay it and go ahead, but that's what I'm willing to do, but I wanna get this extradited, I don't wanna drag it out. And then the other thing I wanna just address is the county paid me money, which I didn't cash the check yet. I'm willing to return that, so it was Jim, and there's only probably one other person, which I don't know why he got anything, because.
Buffer zone.
Yeah.
Yep.
Right.
Payments.
You know, it's, the check is still in in escrow, I never did anything with it. So, you know, I wanna know if that kinda goes away, if I return that, or, you know, I'm willing to do all that, you know what I mean?
Because the ditch is on no one else's property but ours, and Jim's.
And we talked to, I would say, all, everyone we talked to were a hundred percent agreeable with us, which is probably around eighteen out of the twenty three.
Twenty four, yeah.
Yeah.
Benefiting landowners or the benefited owners or benefited people?
And the rest of them, we just never talked to, because we started buying them.
Sure.
The church won't, you know.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
acreage wise, we probably have ninety percent plus.
Sure.
Of the people that that had signed, there was no.
Mr. Chair, yeah, go ahead.
You said the ditch is ninety percent on our property.
Commissioner Pop, could Christine or Chris comment on the outstanding balance? And I'm sure that that's the checks that are not cashed.
I think that was basically for all of figuring everything out on all these ditches.
Redetermination.
As H two O overview.
Yeah.
And we done that.
Beer and all, you know, all the other things, that, you know, I went to a lot of those ditch authority meetings, well, I understand where that co- that they're assigning that that their cost from, but irregardless, if that's paid, there's still seven thousand dollars that, if we take the ditch back, I mean, it's not a party fund, does it get refunded?
Right, yeah.
Landowners or, you you know, or does it get, since we're taking it over, is it applied for us cleaning it out? You know what I'm saying, so?
But, you know, the other thing is, is if, you know, the six thousand or seven thousand, you know, just about, is that pro, I mean, not pro rated, but a percentage being paid back to each individual landowner? Like a guy pays ten, does he get a dollar back? What I mean, if these funds are paid in?
Good questions, maybe Christine, if if you wanna answer some of Commissioner Pop's questions, or if you have answers yet at this point, I don't know.
So that maintenance assessment that was approved for the fifteen thousand, again, the negative balance on the ditch was the sixty nine hundred, and then the buffer, the other part of it was the buffer strip payments, which was eighty seven hundred. Of those buffer strip payments, like he said, there was three checks that went out. His was the largest, um, it was, yeah, about around.
I have it in my envelope, dude.
His was eighty three hundred, Jim Gans was three hundred, and then Todd Lupus Meyer was eighty three dollars, and only Todd's was cashed.
Okay, so.
You know, if it has to extradite that, I'd be willing to pay that back to other.
So I think, I don't, what I don't know that we have an answer for you today on is all your questions, because, I mean, we we got an answer on on how the sixty nine hundred dollar deficit showed up, right?
Right.
But what we can do about the other things, we're gonna need to find that out for you, because I don't know that, sitting here today, we can answer you.
And the statute that was referred to about not being able to accept a petition because of the unpaid assessments.
Right.
You know, we weren't aware of that, it looks like it was just installed last year.
Sure.
And it probably was because everybody was petitioning to have their ditch cleaned.
Well.
You know, so I'm I'm sure that was a tool that was put in place to say, okay, well, we can do that, but we wanna make sure that we have the money to do it.
Exactly.
I I understand that that part of it, you know, um, when when Christine said, you know, because of the unpaid assessments, we're like, well, if you meet in August, there's always gonna be unpaid assessments, so that is the main reason why we're here today, so that we can make you aware of what we would like to do, you know, and how we can go about this so that we can, you know, speed up the process, I guess.
Sure.
You know, because the longer it goes and the more money that's paid out or paid in, it's just becomes more of a bookkeeping nightmare.
And then, you know, the other question would be that if we decide to pay these assessments, you know, the, you know, now, if these people are getting taxed and do pay it in double dip thing, what happens there, does that? So, you know, this thing is gonna get really kind of.
Messy.
Bent out of shape, you know, you know.
So if the four main ones pay in, and then we pay the balance, and then somewhere along the way, somebody else pays in, then it's gonna be a overpayment.
Right. You know, the other thing I can do on my side is, you know, send them letters, I probably won't, or whatever, you know what I mean? Tell them what I'm doing so they don't, you know, pay it. But I'm sure they're gonna have it on the taxes now that it wasn't prepaid. But if I can get that clarified with her, maybe, I don't know.
Michelle, are you online with us, did I see you?
I am, yep, and I do have vacations. According to the law, um, technically, the time that they needed to request reconsideration of those buffer strips was when we did that redetermination, because that was part of that damages award. So they had the ability to appeal at that time. And I did double check this answer, um, and did reach out to John Cold as well as other attorneys. So unfortunately, there isn't anything we can really do about those buffer damages. Now, if they wanna coordinate payment with their neighbors to kinda get rid of that, that's something that they can do. Regarding that annual maintenance, there's no requirement that we charge an assessment in August for maintenance of this particular ditch. If there is a desire to abandon, unfortunately, we can't consider any petitions to abandon until the balance is paid up in full, which would include that entire fifteen thousand.
Okay, Commissioner Kepinski.
Mr. Chair, thank you, a couple things, so the the buffer payment, that would that would be easy because most of it's not cash, they could pay that back.
Eighty three bucks.
And one of the, the last thing is, is the the, uh, maintenance of the ditch or the cleaning, we haven't done anything with that. If we rescinded that back, and that may, that may fix its own problem, because if they don't ever file a petition for maintenance or cleaning.
Right.
Then they won't get assessed that. So maybe we don't have to go through the abandonment.
Well, it's, Chris, Chris had said that that would be the best route.
Oh.
And it's one of the, out of all the ditches, you know, in Benton County.
It's short.
Ditch four is probably the least of his concerns, and just one last thing for him to deal with.
Yeah.
We get it.
We got it.
It's totally on our property.
Right.
You know, almost ninety nine percent.
Right.
So it does go into a a wetlands, but there is no ditch beyond that, the ditch stops on our property.
Michelle, I'll get back to you in a moment.
May I ask a just clarifying question? I I thought I understood Christine to say that the the assessment, this fifteen thousand dollars, were for two things. The the buffer strip damages and then the original redetermination benefits costs. So to to this point, we've not assessed a quote, maintenance assessment per se. We're attempting to recover the cost of the buffer strip damages and the original redetermination benefits, right? So I I think my point is, I don't know if there's anything to weigh or to sort of rescind at this point. We still need to recover those costs.
Well, they're gonna return the buffer strip payments, so.
And I'd be willing to pay this.
I I guess I, for, maybe that's another issue, I'll defer to Michelle on that issue, but I know we need to, we need to recoup the cost of redetermination benefits. That was like the six or seven thousand dollar number, right? Yeah.
We understand.
Right, yeah.
Michelle, I'm gonna go back to you, but before I hand it off to you, could we have her volume turned up a little bit, please? A little bit of a hard time, your earner. Thank you.
And and we've got several estimates, you know, to clean the ditch. So, you know, twenty five to three thousand dollars, so, I mean, you know.
It really does, it it is an necessity.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The ditch is working.
Yeah, yeah, sure. All right, Michelle, go ahead, thank you.
All right, I will try to speak louder as well.
Will we turn the volume?
I got you now.
Good.
Okay, all right, so that fifteen thousand, like Monty clarified, is both that buffer and redetermination cost. And what I found out is we can't rescind that buffer cost. We have to collect that, they should cash their checks. If they themselves want to facilitate with their neighbors on paying them back or what they were paid, that's on them. But at this point, there's nothing the board can do to rescind that buffer strip payment.
So we gotta cash and then write a check back to you and make it all paper?
Correct, yeah.
Which I'm willing to do, but we just didn't wanna, you know, get ahead of the game, do it.
Yep. Nope, that's, and I appreciate that, thank you. Commissioner Pinsky, do you have a comment?
No, I'll, I'll just, uh, I'm just gonna reiterate, we, this is not a money making deal for the county, so.
I agree with that.
We wanna do it right.
Yeah.
And and like I said, you know, even like Todd Lewis Meyer, which is the other eighty dollars, I'm willing to add that to my cost and be done with it.
Sure.
Not gonna pursue, you know, whatever, just tell him he owes me a dinner or something.
Yeah.
So what can, I, this question, I guess I'm gonna throw up for Michelle and Christine and Chris, is what can we do to help get this process moving for these people to get it finished? What what can we do to help expedite the process? I I understand your point of we can't take care, we can't rescind the buffer payments, but we just heard the landowners say they'll go ahead, cash them, turn around, reimburse. So where does that put us today, Michelle?
The faster you can collect that assessment, the better.
Okay.
Um, it really, once it's all paid and there's no outstanding assessment amount, which this is a one-year assessment.
Yep.
Once we don't have that balance, then we can proceed with a petition, that means the requirements.
Okay, then, uh, just to clarify a little more, so we need to pay the assessments and return the buffer strip money at the same time?
Correct. Well.
Well, it just needs to happen.
Yeah, it just needs to happen before.
Yes, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
But now, Jim Gans is here, he's the other one that got the the three hundred dollars, so. We we gave all the landowner signatures to Christine already, do we have to go through that process again? There was some mention about we had to have PID numbers with every owner.
Like husband, wife.
Every owner's signature where, you know, I mean, we didn't get husband, wife, son, daughter, you know what I mean? It it's just one of them from that property signed, you know.
My my guess is, I want, I don't wanna answer for you, Michelle, but I would assume we're gonna require all signatures on the petition.
Well, according to the statute, no, it doesn't need it. It's only fifty two percent of that statute one oh eight.
Yep, but a parcel will not count unless it includes. Includes every single property owner that owns that piece.
Commissioner Kepinski.
Michelle, um, if if we take, if they take care of all the assessments that are on there, we got a zero, net zero, and the only time that there would be additional. there, we got a zero, net zero, and the only time that there would be an additional assessment is for maintenance from here on out, correct?
Hasn't been repaired, though.
It hasn't been repaired, though.
Yeah. Hasn't been repaired yet.
Or so, so, or a repair order.
Right.
That would be the only time there'd be another assessment. I guess where I'm going at is, if we get this all cleared up, it helps Christine with getting tax stuff out and everything like that in a timely manner. And then you got some time to figure out if that's the route you want to go and, and, because it's gonna be at a, at a net zero unless you guys put in a petition for, for repair.
So, well, they're not going to if they're gonna...
No, that's what I'm saying.
Right.
Yeah.
Because the ditch has not been looked at.
The one cost, we still have the obligation to inspect, so that's why it's probably better to abandon.
Right.
So you're not incurring any cost related.
Michelle, timeline-wise, if, if these landowners were to, we were back to a net zero, they move ahead with clarifying their petition signatures for abandonment. I would assume this could happen before the August annual meeting where there's any inspections or maintenance requirements or anything done at our annual ditch meeting. Would that be a fair statement?
That would be a fair statement, and again, you are not required, unless you plan on doing inspection work, to charge an annual assessment.
Sure. So I, so at this point, what I'm hearing is the landowners in this petition for the abandonment just need to make sure where they have the signatures of all landowners, in this case, husband, wives, whatever, is on those parcels. Is that correct?
Yeah. Now, I will state, there will be a cost associated with holding the public hearing. That would be the only concern. So...
But we won't be at a net zero if, if, if they re, cash the...
There'll be money in there.
They, they cash the buffer checks and, and put them back in. I mean, yeah, you have a, you know, your fifteen thousand now because of the negative balance and the buffer strips, but once they return the buffer strips, you're gonna have, you're gonna have some money there, correct?
Well, but no, you see, you're getting the seven thousand, but you have another ten or seven thousand in there.
Yeah.
That's not gonna be used if this goes through.
And what happens to that, you know?
No, 'cause I...
Correct me if I'm wrong.
Go ahead. The, the H2O overviewers and, and the, the determination benefits already been done a year and a half or two years ago.
Yeah.
So that's where part of that sixty-nine hundred dollars is at, correct, Christine?
Right, but what happens to the money that they return, that the buffer strips?
You know, the assessments are over what the balance is in there. So there's gonna be a balance of seven thousand left in there after that.
After the sixty-nine is paid.
Yeah.
So the math, the, I, I get where you guys are coming from, but the two equal out. So if you return a check for eighty-five hundred, let's just say that's what it was.
We're gonna pay a total of fifteen thousand. You got, uh, what is it? Where's that down? Seven thousand, that's old, that is assessed rate. Okay, now there's another seven thousand in there that won't be used.
No, there wouldn't be, because it, if you, if you took your, it, if you just took and rescinded the eighty-three hundred, whatever.
You're not gonna tax that, but we're paying it to get rid of this statute of one oh three that, that...
Yep. So basically, it's a check out and a check in.
Mm-hmm.
And then you still got the sixty-nine hundred dollars.
Well, Commissioner.
Go ahead.
Christine, what is the total balance, or total amount of assessments with buffers and redetermination on that ditch?
Fifteen thousand.
Fifteen thousand. And if they, if they write a check for what they got for buffer strips, there's still gonna be a seven thousand balance, right? And that was already paid out.
You know, for the redetermination.
Redetermination. We can't go back and not get that.
No, we understand that.
They had to be, so then there'll be a balance of seven thousand bucks yet, not excess of seven. It would be a balance of seven thousand that we've already paid out.
Well, but what we're saying is we paid a fifteen, I mean, the thirteen or the fifteen amount that's due yet, plus the land.
Oh.
Twenty, I ain't talking like you are. I'm twenty...
Yeah, okay.
Twenty-three, twenty-four thousand, or whatever it would be.
No, I, I think they could just pay the fifteen and be done.
Okay.
Not the fifteen plus the eight.
Right.
It'd be the fifteen total.
Pay the fifteen, cash your check, and use that however you wish.
Christine, go ahead.
But I also have to get the tax statements out, you know, beginning of March, so those assessments, since it, it is an approved assessment, will go on those tax payers unless it's paid.
See, then that money might come in, too, if we get in contact.
That would go back.
And we're, we're willing to pay that. I mean, I am, you know, right, you know, anytime if we can do that.
So we gotta try to get them all done before that, and pay the balance before March, so that you know.
Right.
Yeah. Because otherwise, it's going on the assessment.
Preferably in February, because...
I take February fifteenth.
That's...
Okay. And I, I think they've had really good communications when I've, when I've talked to them with everybody that's on the ditch and the benefited acres, that they should be able to...
Michelle brought up a good point, though, just so everybody's on the same page, is any and all cost of that ditch system to do any of this goes on that system. So we're gonna have to have a public hearing for abandonment, right?
Right.
So there's a little bit of cost there.
We understand.
That'll be on that system. Okay, I just, I didn't want...
Paid at a later date.
Yeah, I just didn't want her to be surprised.
The signed petition that we got, do you think that's good, good enough, or do we have to, you know, go back?
Does...
I mean, I don't...
Do we have to revisit all?
I got a question for Michelle on that, because I understand that there's a few absentee owners on that benefited acre part. Do they have to have a hundred percent, or just...
No.
What percentage do they have to have?
Fifty-one percent.
I believe it's fifty-one percent.
So, so you should be good, because I understand you're in more like at the eighty percent or higher?
Yeah.
Are you in agreement with that, Michelle?
Yeah, so that's not the issue. You just need to have every owner of all of those people petitioning signing off. So if a parcel has four property owners, all four of those individuals need to sign the petition.
Michelle, in the benefited acres?
Yes, benefited acres. So there's two. You can either get fifty-one percent of the total property owners.
Oh, I get what she's saying.
Or fifty-one percent of benefited acres.
Fifty-one percent.
I thought it said fifty-one percent of the landowners, which, which, which Mike and I are more than fifty-one percent of, of the landowner that the ditch is on.
No, it has to be benefited acres.
Okay.
So we did do the calculation. You don't quite need that fifty-one percent.
But it was still, it still wasn't enough.
Yeah, you just need to make sure that you've got enough benefited acres represented.
Yeah, by percentage of acres.
I didn't read where, where it said that you needed a hundred percent either way, though.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
So does that make sense, gentlemen?
So we just need fifty-one percent of the benefi...
Benefited acres.
Benefited acres.
Landowners.
So you shouldn't have to worry about the absentee ones, or the ones, I understand there was a few you couldn't find?
Right.
So that should be a fairly easy fix.
Yeah, we just gotta revisit them to get additional signatures.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And, and honestly, if you take care of the fifteen grand, unless you guys pretty much petitioned for something, there's gonna be nothing in there until it gets, if it gets turned back or whatever.
Well, that's why I wanted to get ahead.
Yeah, that's, and that's the point.
Yep.
It's like you said, just like the Excel thing there.
Yeah.
That's why we wanted to come today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, hey, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you, Christine, Chris, and Michelle, for working with them on this. Appreciate it. Anything else, Chris? All right, ditch authorities adjourned at ten fifty-seven. Turn it back to Board Chair.
Commissioner, meeting updates? Anybody have anything?
Commissioner Benoit?
Yep.
We'll start with you.
She's giving you the nice smile.
I, I don't really have anything for, I think I just had the one radio meeting. Other than that, that was about it.
Yeah, and, and the other one we had together was with the city of Sauk Rapids, and Chris.
I can go next, Mr. Chair, if you'd like. Just a handful of things. Commissioner Pop and I were able to attend the Soil and Water Conservation District meeting on the eighteenth of December, Burning Tholes' last meeting. Trying to remember how many years, eighteen or something?
Yeah.
That he served on that board, so thank him for doing that. Of course, we had our BEP Christmas party. I think most of us were in attendance on that. Our twelve-thirty special meeting, which was on the record books for Commissioner Kapinski getting it done in less than a half an hour. And Commissioner Kapinski and I also were able to attend the Benton Communications, quote-unquote, what's the term I want?
Ribbon cutting?
Ribbon cutting down at St. George Township Hall. You know, that's where their location is, and, and able to thank Donnie Martin was there from their board, and Chad Keenig and Cheryl Skapansky from Benton Communications. And so we did that last week, down at St. Georgetown Hall, last Thursday afternoon, so fun to be a part of that. And then Commissioner Pop and I had a, a subcommittee meeting yesterday with Chris and Monty and our county attorney, Kathleen, and our assistant county attorney, Michelle, to introduce ourselves and have a good conversation with John Kolbe from Rankin Noonan, who we do have on retainer to help us with some drainage authority issues, so...
That was really good.
It was a good meeting, lasted about an hour, and so I think we left there with good communication and understanding of whose roles are what. So that's all I had. Thank you.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I had one more. So on December eighteenth, we had Career Solutions Staff Appreciation Day, and we served lunch to the staff.
Okay, great. And as Mr. John said, I went to the SWCD. You veiled out a little earlier when they got into this well sealing deal. We have somebody that wants to seal a bunch of wells up in northwest Benton County that our irrigation well is gonna be sealed for that. And I don't know how they're, they were gonna contact Bowser to see how much money they could actually put towards this, but if they approved those well ceilings, it was gonna virtually take all of the funds that are available for the rest of the county for 2025. So I don't know what they did with that. Then we had the BEP board meeting prior to the, the little Christmas deal.
Yeah.
And we had, we got one opening on the board, and we haven't reached out to anybody yet to, well, they, they selected a candidate, and I don't know if he, he actually accepted the position, but was application only, and I was surprised. We had five applicants that wanted to be on that board, which was really interesting. I mean, a couple of them didn't meet the requirements of, you know, they had a business and it wasn't in the county, and they didn't live in the county. They were just trying to do business in the county. So I thought that was really good. And then on the twentieth of, of the month, we had Micah interviews all day. We interviewed six candidates. We selected one, and she returned, she rejected the position when she signed, so we went to the second one. Nathan Jansen from a private lobbying firm has accepted it. So we, we had another meeting on the twenty-third, on Monday, and tried to do it, but we did it by Zoom to set what the compensation and all that was. He did accept the position, and we're still working on a salary package for him. So he'll, I, I think he's really, I mean, I was, there was four out of the six were really good candidates that you can work with. I think the one that rejected it from the League of Cities, I think the League of Cities came back and says, you know, oh, no, 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 we're gonna give you this much more money. So I think that's what happened there. So that part is, will be moving forward, and we do have BEP meeting tomorrow. And I don't think we've, you know, you're gonna do Zoom, or do you want?
I'll do Zoom.
Okay.
Or if, if somebody else wants to be on it.
Yeah, it'll be...
You got it?
I got, yeah, I'll, I'll take care of it for this time. You know, I'm probably have to take care of it for longer, because I'll be on the executive committee one more year.
Yeah, let's talk about that on Monday.
Yeah. Okay. All right, that was it. That's all that I had.
If I could, Mr. Chair, just expand quickly. I was there for the conversation on the well. And remember...
Did you, about the guy that fell in?
Oh, yes, that part, too. That is actually what I was going to say. But they'd had really good discussion about it. Put this, the Soil and Water Conservation Board in this position of, if we expend all these dollars on one property owner, is it a good use of taxpayer money? Because now you've got all these other well ceilings, applicants that get in.
And there's no money.
And there's no money, because we spent them all on one, which is gonna be developing something.
Hmm, yeah.
So that was good discussion.
Yeah.
And it was a...
And I don't know what, they were gonna contact Bowser to see if it was even legal
Sure.
to, to spend that all on one client.
Their inclination was Bowser would tell them, it's your grant dollars, figure out what to do with it.
Yeah.
So anyways. Right.
Nothing?
Any other Commissioner comments? Not requiring board action?
What, on the ledge?
That's all I got. You like that comment?
I do, I do like that.
I, I believe the pasture would have to sign some of those documentation.
Nope, because we changed those.
Um, okay, set committee of the halls.
Mr. Chair, before I do that, can I just, I, I'd like to read this email. I, I just got a little bit of going. It's from Laura Ostley. She's the program manager for Bollig Engineering. She says, "The city of Gilman received wonderful news over the last few days, weeks, as they received their letter of conditions from USDA for their infrastructure project. Once again, this project would not be possible without the support of Benton County. Again, appreciate all the assistance and looking forward to seeing this project get underway."
Great.
Wow, that's great news.
That is good news.
Did you know that, Chris?
Yeah, I have a meeting with Bollig Engineers on Friday to discuss the project schedule.
So...
That's awesome.
Did you?
I did not.
So now it's back on schedule?
I, I just learned this on Thursday last week. I got an email.
This is USDA?
So we scheduled a meeting for Friday to, to talk about that, so...
USDA grant?
I'm assuming, yeah.
This is USDA, yeah.
Yeah. That's right at the end of the year, so...
What a great...
I got it.
Awesome.
I thought I'd mentioned it.
Thank you.
Thanks, Monty.
So, Mr. Chair, just a couple of things. Can you make the whole calendar? February thirteenth is Transportation Day at the Capitol. The event begins at nine thirty AM in St. Paul. Any folks interested in attending Transportation Day at the Capitol, February thirteenth, that's a Thursday, beginning at nine thirty in St. Paul?
Uh, this is Minnesota Transportation Alliance Day.
Yes, sir, Minnesota Transportation, of which we are a member.
Yes.
Okay.
Of which we are a member.
Um, Chris, are you attending? Do you know, the thirteenth?
I believe I can. I haven't, I haven't signed up yet, but...
Oh, that's January. I gotta get into February.
I have it on my calendar, and I'm, I would like to attend. I do have a note to cancel a week ahead of time for you, but...
They do ask for registration prior, so, and it appears that they're, they facilitate making meetings with legislators during the day. So the event is like all, basically all day, nine thirty to three, it looks like.
Yeah.
Yep.
We're down there, I think, the week after. Is that for the legislative...
Two weeks after.
Conference?
Yeah.
Two weeks.
Two weeks.
So at this point, Commissioner Johnson and Chris, okay, and we can facilitate registration for you. Okay. All right. Second, Kristin Sheeta invites you to participate in a update of the Benton County Hazard Mitigation Plan. A little bit of a tricky challenge on this one, because